You're upside down. I can't hear you. I think you're muted. Down in the lower left hand corner where it says mute.
Is that Mr. Wallace upside down? Who is that who's upside down? You have sound Jackie?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not sure who's hanging upside down below me. You don't have sound and you're upside down. You're standing on your head, gentlemen with the glasses.
Hello.
Hello Deb.
Hi.
D Wall, can you hear us? You have no sound and you're upside down on the screen. But I'm looking at you standing on your head, moving your mouth, but we have no sound at all from you. Feels like the judge in Texas with the cat face.
We've got Monique here.
And we go to Ed.
Hi Ed.
Hi there.
There's Carl.
Thank you, Decky for sending me that link.
Oh, you're welcome. Anytime. I was gonna say, it also should be on the agenda that's on the website, but Kathy's been out, so it might not even be on the website.
That's why I couldn't find it today.
Oh. Peter?
I have to understand, I'm gonna make you the host, so if anything happens.
Hey.
You'll be good to go. Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five. We have a quorum. Why did I think I heard Wayne Wood's voice?
We had a face that was upside down that couldn't talk before, but it disappeared. Somebody was standing on their head for quite a while.
Well. I don't have the applicant, so I can start the meeting. I hope he logs in. It is exactly seven o'clock according to the atomic time. So I see a quorum, so I'm calling the meeting of March 14th, 2020, the Wisconsin Planning Board to order. And the first order is business is the minutes of the February 14th meeting, Valentine's Day.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as submitted and written.
Second.
As a ready discussion, errors, omissions, conditions? I didn't see any. Jack was your usual thorough self. All right, planning board meetings have to be by voice call or roll. Jackie?
Hi.
Myself is yes. Al?
Yes.
Thank you, Deborah?
Yes.
And Peter? No voice.
Voice?
There we go.
Got boys.
None of them.
All right. It's been unanimous of those voting, motion passes. Where is Wayne Wood? Let me give him a call, because I know he planned it to be here. How can I have 10 unread messages? God, there's a lot of names in my book.
Leave your book home when you go on vacation.
Today is Pi Day. Did you know that? 3.14?
I'll have a piece of apple, please.
Yeah. I can think of a couple ideas. Piece of pie would be nice. An honor. So mine was busy.
Buller. Buller waiting. I don't know if you guys have heard yet or not, but I've decided to run for the State House.
I heard a rumor.
I heard a rumor, yes. So I'm kind of all excited about that.
I hope so.
At the moment, the challenge, well, everything is a challenge. I had delivered my nomination papers and my declaration of intent to the state to get certified as a candidate. And they lost my declaration of intent. Out of surprise, Al, you know what the problems are with the state. You've had the experience. So the next, I've got that resolved finally, but I've decided to run as a clean election candidate. And I'm in the process of collecting $65 contributions. You could certify me as a candidate, a clean election candidate, and the state will distribute about $5,000 for the campaign, which is about what it takes. This out.
Count me in for five.
I will do that. I'll come see you.
I'll give you five bucks.
Thank you, sir. In any case, as it turned out, I had had a number of them already collected. And because of that declaration of intent, they could lost, they were all not acceptable. I had to go back and start all over again. I'm learning some great lessons here. It's never a dull moment.
Good luck.
I'm looking forward to the. How do I say that? Experience. Thank you, guys.
Answering machine at his office. I know he planned it to be here. I am about to email him, if I can find my email.
Hey, look, Wayne Wood.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting for you.
I'll be right on.
All right.
And where do I find the link for it?
Oh, well, if I can type your address, I will forward it now. Putting it right in the subject line.
Okay.
That's all right.
Yeah.
I just heard from him and I sent him the link. So we'll give him a few minutes of grace. Think you're all familiar with the general area. Is that what he's calling? Ah, that's what he's calling it. But it's a, it's a, I want to speak, a 14 knot subdivision. On the north side of the Foy Road between the CNP Powerline and Monseague Stream. This is a former Herbert Crafts property. A chunk of it. They've apparently already sold. Sold or conveyed, but. I think that's about 10 acres, 19.7 acres of the north that jutted up into the land of Sean Barnes. To one of the Barnes, anyway, either Sean or Lisa. They both own up there. That's a sale ton of butter. So it doesn't count as a lot. Come on, Wayne. Hurry up, Wayne, or I'll let Al make his motion. There, I'm gonna guess D Wall, maybe?
Yeah, that's who was on upside down before with no voice.
Ah, maybe that's not him.
I was gonna ask you, was he bald? Because I saw this bald head hanging from the ceiling.
No, Wayne.
And he was talking, but nothing was coming out.
He was lucky enough that it's.
Ah, there he is upside down again.
How do you do that, whoever?
He's walking on the ceiling.
Oh, you know, that's. Steve, Stephen. Show, planning board member. Steve Wallace. Yeah. Oops, what happened to my Microsoft documents? There. Oops. I do wonder how you get upside down. That's not Wayne. Anti-gravity, where is Wayne? Sorry about this, folks. I hear a voice somewhere.
Are you on mute?
Oh, Peter. Any camping lined up yet, Peter?
Uh, no, we just, we just got a family trip scheduled, so now we can't, we gotta go camping next. We're a little late here.
I was one of the, I didn't actually hear the article, but it was an article apparently on. The Channel 6 anywhere about how soon the system, mains reservation system was overwhelmed to the state parks. Gee, I got 50 nights and 12 minutes. And that doesn't even count the 50 days it's about to start coming, some soon. How's school, Dad?
Uh, today was our first day back without mask. It was optional. And it was very political. One student asked me, why do all the teachers have masks on? And I said, I don't know, they want to be safe. So the teachers.
You're a germ carrying little burgers now. I always told Deb, I always told Deb, first day of school, she was diving back into that cesspool of germs. So, and sure enough, for the end of the month, she'd have a nasty something or other.
Somebody has, that doesn't have this, but mic on mute.
Oh, I don't have mine muted. If you're hearing my dog, no, it's not muted. I can mute. Thought you want to hear me talk. I'm recording a lot of nothing here.
How long are we gonna wait? Quarter after we'll call this?
Well, it is pushing it now.
It sounded like you didn't even know tonight was the night when you called.
Yeah, I'm surprised, because I know, I mean, you made the submissions in time, knew the date. But we all slip a date. Okay. This is preliminary, right? Yeah, pre-application. I'll give him the 7:15.
Jackie, while we're waiting, the next selectman's meeting, that's gonna be live in the meeting room, or do you know?
Yes, it's gonna be live, but they're gonna use the.
The owl.
The owl.
Woo, woo. Is that how you spell my name?
But anyway, it's gonna be live and Zoom, both.
They had used that owl at the budget meeting Saturday, and I thought it worked pretty well.
Yeah, well, they're gonna use that from now on, I guess. So we can, somebody could figure out how to do that with, for planning board. Maybe. Never did figure out the, you know, the recording system in the. Meeting room, not really. Yeah, I used to know how to do that. I can remember we had a couple of meetings that, no, we didn't do it. We thought we did, but we didn't. Right. Oh, Wayne Wood is logging in and connecting his audio. Come on, Gray has a good connection. Gray. Yeah. Wow. Lemon Ray. Hope he's not upside down when he gets here. I guess Steve has left, right? Yeah, I mean, I try again, but he's left.
You know, after you hang on your head for so long, you get a little dizzy and you sign off.
Right. I don't, I don't, I don't know that, but.
He'd been on before you called, and he was upside down and talking. We couldn't hear him.
Yeah.
Wayne Wood, where are you?
Yeah, he's, audio's trying to connect. That is. Reality we have with. Digital meetings. Hey, I got a checkmark at my end. Do you hear us, Wayne?
Yes.
Oh.
Finally, I got something to work here.
Good. Got a camera?
I'm working on that part. The laptop is not coming up well.
Okay. Or you can take a minute, or you can just go audio and start explaining the project.
Not too loud on the phone, but if we can make that work. That working point now?
I was wrong, Ali, it's ball. Yeah, we see you. We did.
So we see you sideways.
Yeah.
Much better.
Yeah, I'll get it back right. How's that?
You're on.
Okay. My apologies, all. I've had nothing but laptop issues in the last couple of weeks, and it's still kicking up now, so. We'll go with what we got. So tell me what you're looking for.
Well, I haven't, you know, you tell us who you are and what you're doing.
Okay, I'm Wayne Wood, the surveyor representing John Libby and Big Buck Cove LLC. On the Foy Road project, where we've got 100 and some odd acres of land over there that he purchased. A portion to the rear has been, one of the neighbors out the back wanted it, so they've deeded that a piece off to them. And what John's looking to do is to develop the lots along Foy Road. At this time, and bring that through approval and. See how that goes, and we'll take it from there for what we might do with the rest of it. Um, there's using up all of the, or a lot of the frontage that's in the higher portion of the ground, there's wetlands out here that. Primarily are on the, on the, on the westerly side are associated with the Monseague Brook. There's some topography relief in the back of the property primarily out towards the road. Kind of levels out a little bit more, so we're gonna utilize what we can along the road to. Facilitate getting a portion of this developed in a timely fashion, we hope. Beyond that, Mark Hampton has done soils tests and the wetland. On what you have in front of you, where we've got two soils tests on each lot. We're proposing at this stage that we've left. Three different slots here to go out into the remaining land for future access. One of those we'd like to develop as a shared driveway at this time to get to two. Lots that are in behind the front two to get us up to the 14 that are allowed outside of DEP official approval. So we're before your board for the purposes of taking this forward to, if we can get some lots to. Sell and build houses on. That's what Mr. John Libby does, is build houses.
Very good.
Anything else?
No, enough for me. Do you have a chance to review the preliminary, Emily?
I did. I didn't, there was nothing jumping out at me that seemed to be missing. Granted, it is a preliminary subdivision plan, so I'm expecting that a full application will come in. Addresses all the requirements that are in the ordinance, but overall, the map's pretty detailed.
All right. I had some very minor things that I already. Emailed Wayne on that were more optical than anything else at this point. Does anybody have any questions? Have Wayne?
Yeah, he had deeded this over when I first created the boundary survey for it. As you commented, my note number one still lists John Libby, and there is an actual deed of the corporation that I.
You incorporated.
Final version here.
Yep. These are all. Just over an acre, yeah, look like it.
Yeah, we looked at that as your request. As the ordinance suggests, it's gonna be one acre outside of any of the wetlands that are associated with this stuff, so I've. Got two numbers in each lot that has wetlands within it, so. The larger is the total lot area, and the one in parentheses would be your net lot area minus the wetlands.
Thank you.
We did take a look at, while we were out there doing the initial survey work, as to where the. Proposed accessways to the remaining land would fall to double check to make sure that they had. Good site distance for future use if necessary, so we looked at that issue on that.
That road's pretty decent for most of it. I believe one of our next steps is to plan a site visit. Is it marked, so we can tell where the lots are gonna go?
Not yet, but it can be.
Well, you give us a date when that'll have occurred, and we'll set a planning board meeting right after that. I mean, a site visit right after that.
Well, you tell me when you want to do a site walk, and I'll have it done before then. We can do that.
Well, if you're gonna submit a full application for our next meeting, then the site walk should occur before, I think should occur before that. So that would be two weeks. Well, today's 13th, the 14th, and it's the 28th, 14 days, yeah.
Next meeting would be the 28th, okay? So now that we've got more daylight at night, is there some particular time at which you guys normally do your site walk, or would it be the day of the next meeting?
I, several. Uh, I, several of us have a meeting, on the planning board have a meeting starting at five thirty, that takes us out of doing it beforehand, unless we did it more like four o'clock. Yes, we tend to, everybody works, so we tend to try to do it later in the day. Who do I have for volunteers to go out on the Foy Road? Thank you, Al. Deborah, one more. Thank you, Peter. So we'll make it the, the, whether permitting, the twenty-eighth, that four o'clock? That work for you, Wayne?
I can be there. I can be there.
They need to be able to see where the lot lines are gonna, or lots are gonna fall. To be truthful, I don't think they're gonna go four hundred feet back in the woods, so. At this point, anyway. They are free to do so. All right.
Hope we can-
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, we were looking at potentially some waivers on some stuff that is in your ordinance, such as the hydrogeologic and maybe stuff along those lines. I'm just feel you guys out as to what the, what the board's ideas might be, stormwater. We're, you know, in this case, we're not developing a significant infrastructure or anything. We just got one shared driveway, and the rest would be each lot, which we entertain the request of not a full stormwater study, but a, a soil erosion control plan to be submitted on each building permit type thing, and curious as to how that might work with the, with the board?
I'll go with the first one, because you kind of dropped it and didn't, but didn't go any further, the hydrogeological report. Is anybody gonna support waiving that?
Well, we, we would like to waive that at this, this stage, where we're not developing a significant amount of in- infrastructure out through the the rest of the project, which is all frontage in the stormwater and, and stuff which would go with that. Uh, what we're thinking is that each house lot, as it gets developed, when they come in for the building permit, we'd like to submit the stormwater or soil erosion control measures and everything that go with that house design with each lot, as it, as they come in for the, for that with the code officer. That's something that the board might entertain. If not, we'll proceed to get some of that stuff together.
We haven't in the past, and particularly since it's a fourth, you're starting with fourteen lot subdivision. I don't, you know, that's, and it hasn't been set the way of that.
You said has?
Has not been set the way that.
Thank you. I wasn't sure of the words I was hearing. I understand the idea that infrastructure is almost non-existent, except for the actual houses. There's no, well, you actually do have, at least at the moment, a proposed road of four hundred and four hundred feet-ish.
Yes. At this time, that would be, would, would be a shared driveway to those back two lots, unless you wish us to utilize it for the front two lots as well, which, which is certainly doable.
I think that's something we can decide after the site plan. But probably gonna require you to have some sort of way to turn around up there.
We can put a temporary turnaround in there.
Yeah. Till you expand into the remaining land. Or it can actually, if you got a wet one there, you might want to just make it in the, push it a little further, I don't know. Uh, any other thought? Well, anybody else have a comment about the hydrogeologic? Stormwater? I'm not seeing a lot of support, Wayne. Stephen, welcome back. Can you hear us? Stephen was having even more trouble than you were getting on tonight. He's still having trouble getting on. He was upside down and silent before, now he's just. Yeah. Okay, well, do you have any other questions then, or any other things? You know, I think you mentioned landscape plan to me.
I did. Just, uh, once again, we're not developing it with, or in the middle of a forest here, trying to put things in so we can, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what a landscape plan would yield on, on this type of development. It was, it's not like we're out in the middle of a field or anything, so. We will be requesting that, and I know that John was down talking with the fire chief at some point to see what, what he was looking for, and we'll have more, more on that later, too.
I was gonna say, I'll need to figure out where those are gonna go. I mean, I'm personally landscape plan, we've only asked for it really on site developments, I think. He's already gonna be limited on the percentage of lot cleared and setbacks. What's the thoughts?
To that end, you're gonna have a, a limited, if we do a full stormwater study on each of these lots, there's probably gonna be some restrictions put on each lot for amount of clearing anyway, so.
Yeah. I'm not hearing anybody jump up and down.
I have no objections to a lack of a landscape plan, considering it's boards, and that's something we have waived in the past, but to happen, you have to apply in writing for it to happen.
He knows that.
Situation.
He's only taking temperature, not asking yet. He put it in writing.
Yep.
I'm guessing that's something you might succeed at, Wayne?
I think so.
Anything else from you?
Oh, I think I'm good.
All right. So what, I guess let me know, or if you've communicated with Jack, no, I don't think you have, but I'll forward along when you've got it marked, or that you can confirm you can keep that meeting on the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth. And for the board members who are going, let's meet on the Foy Road kind of right where the, the house is with the multiple garages. We can go from there.
Multiple garages.
Used to be Herb's house.
Oh, oh yeah, it's quite a ways back, but yep. Yep. Okay. Yeah, the road isn't very wide down there.
That's what I figured, let's get off the corner a little, not, not be where somebody can get clipped.
You and Peter know the site, because across the street was the site development plan we did for the water treatment guy. I've forgotten his name already.
Yep.
Totally, yes.
Yeah.
Appleby.
Yeah, Appleby, thank you. Why did I couldn't? All right then, Wayne, we look forward to more materials from you.
Yep, and, and because we're looking at taking the input that you've just given me on the stormwater and the hydro, we need that for the preliminary, so we probably won't request to be on, I doubt if we can get all that together for you by the twenty-eighth, shall we say? I suspect we'll be looking for, you should be looking for us to come in in April with all the, the rest of the stuff that we're gonna need.
All right. You wanna, uh, do, do you want to push out the site visit then? Because, I mean, I don't care, but.
Nope, I'm, I'm good. Let's get that out of the way, and then we'll have it out of the way.
All right.
This, so will this be on the agenda for the twenty-eighth?
Um, if we meet on the twenty-eighth, no, he said he won't have any more material.
I didn't know whether he's gonna have some.
The site committee could-
We could report on the site.
Report, but-
At that meeting.
They can also do it again at the, whatever the next meeting is that they submit.
To you. Here, Steve.
Stephen! How you doing?
Good, good. Computer problems, but who knows what?
They seem to be rampant tonight. You have made it just in time to hear Al's favorite motion.
At seven thirty-
I would, I hoped I could on that.
At seven thirty-two PM, I make my favorite motion that we adjourn.
And I'll make my favorite second.
And roll call. Jackie votes yes, I vote yes, Al votes-
Vote yes.
Debra votes?
Yes.
Peter votes?
Yes.
Stephen votes?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you all for showing up.
Thank you.
Wayne, see you on the twenty-eighth.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I think when I click leave, it closes.